Okay, we're live on the website. I'm gonna count us down. Mrs. McGraw, are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, I'm gonna count down five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Charles County Public Schools June 29th, 2020 Parent-Community Town Hall. Thank you for joining us this evening. The Board of Education is committed to academically strong schools that are safe, respectful, and welcoming to all of our community. Part of that commitment is hearing from our employees, our parents, and community members about issues that are important to you and our students. COVID-19 has presented challenges that caused us to close our school doors in March with very little notice. Little did we know that we would not reopen again in the 2019-2020 school year. This evening, we're here to share some of our thoughts and planning for reopening the schools in the fall. The information you will hear is alternative. Final decisions will not be made until August when the superintendent receives additional direction from the State Superintendent Dr. Karen Salmon. Although the future is uncertain, we continue to develop multiple options depending on the situation in August. The Board and Charles County Public Schools are hosting the town halls to gather opinions and feedback on options to reopen schools in the fall. The Board members hope you will freely share your ideas, concerns, and suggestions throughout this meeting. What you have to say is important to all of us. The presentations provided during the town hall include options suggested by five school system committees representing the following: Elementary, middle, and high school levels, operations, and health and safety. There are many ways to provide your comments to Board members. Staff, parents, and community members can provide comments for consideration by the Board and Superintendent Dr. Hill by providing comments to the CCPS website at ccboe.com, by calling the public comment voice line, excuse me, voicemail line at 240-776-5803, and leaving a voice message. Staff will compile messages for review. And you may mail comments to CCPS Box 2770, La Plata, Maryland 20646. The deadline to submit comments is Monday, July 6. Copies of the presentation to be shared at the town halls will be posted on the school system website for your review. Charles County Public School staff are planning to present reopening options to the Board in August. This evening is your opportunity to share your thoughts with the Board and the superintendent. It is our opportunity to listen. I will now turn the meeting over to our panelists, Superintendent Dr. Kimberly A. Hill and Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Jason Stoddard. Dr. Hill?
Thank you, Mrs. McGraw, and in a moment, Director of School Safety, Jason Stoddard, and I will go through a presentation that's been posted on the website. But before we get started, I want to acknowledge that earlier today, we held a town hall for our staff members that ran into a few technical difficulties, and we, some of folks had difficulty accessing that town hall on our website. We believe we have resolved that problem by redirecting folks who go to the website to our YouTube channel. And I want the staff members to know who missed the town hall at 4:00 today that we have recorded it, and it will be posted on our website tomorrow, so you'll be able to watch the staff town hall in its entirety. So, having said that, Ms. Mackey, if you could pull up the parent and community member town hall presentation. We'd like to go through that with our parent community. We have been working all summer on how to reopen schools safely in the fall. And so if you go to the next slide, Ms. Mackey, I want to acknowledge before we look forward the work that our parents and our community have done in the last 15 weeks. None of us could have predicted what the world was going to turn into, and we understand that our parents have stepped up beyond expectations. We know that you were juggling your own job and your own work life at home, as well as becoming your child's teacher and helping him or her access our online instruction. So, on behalf of the Board and all of our staff, we'd like to thank you, our parents, who I'm sure at times were frustrated, and I'm sure at times were wondering, "When is this gonna end, and when is my child gonna go back to school?" We want your children back in school, but we can't do so until it's safe. So, this set of pictures on the slide here shows a family learning from what looks to be a kitchen or dining room table, another family learning outside in the backyard, shows some of our staff members and all the hard work they've done over the last 15 weeks. The parents, thank you. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for your commitment to your child's education. We appreciate your ability to adjust to this new way of doing school. Next slide, please. So, everyone wants to know, and everyone is asking us, "What is school gonna look like in the fall?" The straight answer is, we're not exactly sure yet. We are working within some guidelines that I'll talk about in a minute. But as we begin to think about fall and reopening schools, the guiding principles on the screen are those that we really helped track us kind of on the road toward making sure we're doing the right things for your children. So, the main and most important guiding principle that we consider is the health and safety of our staff, students, and our community. We're not gonna open schools if it's not safe to do so. Another thing that we keep in mind is the continuity of learning. How do we continue instruction in a way that is aligned with state standards? So typically, when your children go back to school face-to-face, your town teacher will assess where your children are in relation to what they were supposed to have learned last year. And we'll do that same thing this year, whether it's in-person or whether it's virtual. Our teachers will be tasked with figuring out where our kids are and how to move them forward in the state's standards and accelerate their learning. We're worried about equity and access for all of our students. I need to acknowledge there were some students who were not engaged at all during the last 15 weeks. We did everything we could to reach out to them and to their families, but something, some challenge got in the way. And so we wanna make sure as we reopen schools in the fall that we access and can connect with all of our students in a way that gets them connected to the curriculum and to their school. As we're planning for the fall, we think about how do we support the emotional and mental health needs of not only our students, but our teachers. All of our worlds were kind of upended on March 13th, when the State Superintendent and Governor decided to close schools. And we have gaps in social and emotional needs that will need to be filled. And so that's foremost in our mind as we think about schools in the fall. And then finally, we're committed to clearly and consistently and constantly communicating with you. And you told us in the parent survey, some of you told us, we communicate too much. But we're gonna continue to do that throughout the fall, I mean throughout the summer, so that you know what to expect in the fall. Next slide, please, Ms. Mackey. I think it's important for our community to know that we in Charles County, me as your state, as your local superintendent, I'm not making these decisions in isolation. Every decision we make is aligned with, first of all, the Maryland Strong Roadmap to Recovery, which is the governor's plan for safely reopening our economy and our state. And then we also must be aligned with the Maryland Together Recovery Plan for Education, which was developed by the State Superintendent Dr. Karen Salmon and her team at MSTE. So, everything that we do needs to be aligned with what the decisions that they are making. I think it's also important to point out to our community that as those state-level decisions are being made, we at the local level do not have any information upfront. We don't know any of those decisions until they're broadcast on TV in press conferences. Just like when you learn about those decisions, that's when we learn about those decisions. So, when the State Superintendent first closed schools on March 13th, we had no advance knowledge that schools would remain closed for a certain number of weeks or for the rest of the year. We watched it take place and found out those pieces of information at the same time that you did. Next slide, please. Mr. Stoddard, if you'd pick up about the work groups.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Stoddard. I'm the Director of School Safety and Security for your school system. It is a pleasure to sit in front of you. This has been one of the most, the greatest honors of my career to assist and facilitate this monumental and historic undertaking. In the middle of February, I'm sorry, in the middle of May 20th, under Dr. Hill's guidance, we created, began the process of creating five different work groups that were compiled by administrators, teachers, and support staff so that we could look at what we, as the school system, could do or the capacities and capabilities that we would have. These groups met over the next two weeks, starting from May 28th. They collaboratively, each group spent well over 500 hours during that two weeks working on, looking at, and assessing as a school system, our capacity and capabilities for what falls, for what the opening of schools may look like in the fall. The groups were divided, as Ms. McGraw said, we had a health and safety group, an operations group, and three instruction groups built with experts. Each of these committees were built of experts. On the 20th, I'm sorry, on the June 3rd, a student survey, a staff survey was sent out. We received over 3,000 responses from our staff. On the 23rd of June, we sent out a community survey. The next slide, you will see, and kudos to you, as our community, over 90, almost 9,300 responses were received from our parent survey. You can see on this slide the breakdown. I'm not gonna go over them individually because we wanna make sure that we get to your comments, but you can review them as we post this document, as we've already posted this document. Next slide, please. As we move into the, some of the results, what is of a marked interest on this slide is roughly 62% of those that responded would like to see an option where in-person instruction is included in the choice. We can see that roughly 37.5% of the respondents said that they were not comfortable with their children returning and would like to have virtual learning of some type. Next slide, please. As we continue to illustrate or to look at the results, this question was about, "What influenced your decision to return your child to school?" This aligned very closely with what our staff said as well. You'll see in the bottom three points, you'll see that having clean and healthy, the health needs of our students was the highest influencer on the survey. The family's ability to support remote learning, work schedules, ability to have a vaccine, those came in second. And the last was daycare needs, was the least of the influencers on the results. Next slide, please. In this question, we asked about your children riding the school bus. Transportation is one of the heaviest lifts that we have, and it's a cornerstone issue that we must find solutions to, to return our students to school at any form, outside of a virtual environment. We need your help as a community to make sure that, to try and make the impossible possible. These results are very promising and helpful. We'll discuss this a little bit later in this presentation. But what you'll see is, is we see what we believe is likely a marked increase of you as the parents in our community, willingness to create plans and arrangements to bring your children to school via personally-owned vehicles. Next slide, please.
So, the next piece of the survey that we wanted to highlight for you is what you thought about scheduling options as school resumes for the fall. The top choice was to send your children to in-person school just on certain days of the week. And then children would learn virtually at home on the days they were not in school. The second highest-ranking choice was to send children to in-person school for one full week, and then keep them home for the next full week, and rotate, alternate that throughout the school year. And then the third most popular choice among our parents was to have children learn full-time at home. The least ranked choice was sending children back in-person full-time. Next slide.
In this slide, we see that this asked specifically about computer usage and Wi-Fi issues. These are the two highlights of this slide. The one thing to keep in mind is we put these, put these results into context and digest the results of this information. We likely didn't hear from those who don't have electronic devices or live in an area where there is no internet access because of, because the survey was done via electronic means, and we did not send out home surveys or paper surveys. The other two points that I want to, that I wanna point out, we, once again, we see the community as a whole coming together, and roughly 60% of all the respondents said that they would be willing to have their children come with some type of a lunch. This will again help us because feeding our students, both those in-school and also continuing our community meals program is yet another cornerstone to the reopening of our schools. Next slide, please.
So, this is the slide I referred to earlier about communication. You see that about 82% of you said that we were communicating either just enough or too much. Only 12.5% or so said, "We're not communicating enough." And then on the right-hand side of the slide, you can see how you like to receive information. And we're gonna continue, as I said earlier, to communicate and probably over-communicate because we believe that's important as we go through times that are unknown and anxiety written for you. So, we're trying to communicate more than we should. Next slide. Okay, so let's go through the options. Parents, we are going to lean on you to choose what's best for your child and for your family. So, we're gonna provide a distance-learning option or an in-person instruction option. If you and your family choose the distance-learning option, we'd like you to commit to that for a minimum of a quarter of the school year. We'll do a quarter at a time and see how things go. The distance-learning option will be somewhat similar to what we've done this past spring, but it's going to be more robust and more rigorous, and there will be more accountability for your child and real grading for your child rather than the pass/fail format that we used in the spring. We hope to offer more synchronous learning, more face-to-face, real-time learning, even through distance learning. And so that's what we're working on as we head throughout the summer. Next slide. If you decide to choose the in-person option for your child, we will register your child for that option at their home school. Your child will be assigned in-person instruction two days each week. The other days will be virtual learning. Some of our students, and this gets back to our focus on access and equity, will be maybe offered more in-person days than two days a week. And those groups would include students who are currently on IEPs, our English learner population, our free and reduced meal students, students without internet access, those students that we had difficulty connecting with over the past 15 weeks, and our earliest learners. We recognize that students in kindergarten through eighth grades, two or three really don't thrive in a virtual environment. And so we wanna figure out a way to be able to bring them back to school in person safely within the guidelines that are provided to us by the state. So, all of our, all of our options will provide safeguards at every level to reduce the risk of exposure and spread of the virus. And all of these plans are flexible. They may, they may need to change as conditions change. Next slide.
So, as we get into the recommendations for the actual safeguards that we will put, that we would propose that we put in place, health screenings, and you will see that this, this community effort and a community lift is what we're going to need to ensure the success of this program. So, what we're looking for is our pre-screenings. One of the things that we do realize is that this is always evolving as we learn more about COVID-19. For quite some time now, temperatures alone have no longer, are no longer seen as a standalone symptom by the CDC. And they see that it is multiple symptoms that present. So, temperature and temperature checks may or may not be the most likely way that you can tell whether someone has COVID-19. With that in mind, we are asking that we should have never had ill children inside of our schools. However, with the pandemic that we are experiencing, we can no longer accept ill children attending our schools. We'll talk more about some of the things that we're doing to encourage and help and to beg for your assistance as a community later on. One of the things that we've done is we've entered into a partnership with the Charles County Department of Health to purchase over 53,000 thermometers so that parents can do pre-screening at home with their children, including temperature checks. These will be given if needed by parents. They will be offered for free. Employees will be screened via an electronic process when they log into their computers. We've also went above and beyond to explain to our staff in our previous, in our previous town hall that they should not come to school if they were feeling ill. Any of our contractors that come to our school to do work will also have to be screened. They will screen in doing self-assessments at our scholarship machines that many of you are familiar with for getting the stickers when you come into our schools. The next portion of this slide is about masks. Masks are something that we all know and understand that masks can reduce the risk of transmission, especially when social distancing is impractical. Our expectation when we return to school in the fall is that students will wear their mask when it is practical and developmentally appropriate, but especially when physical distance standards are impractical or impossible. With that said, masks will be With that said, masks will be mandatory on school buses during class transitions, and again, when social distancing is not possible. Next slide, please. So continuing on the social distance theme, we will be moving desks at least six feet apart. There will be no communal gatherings. Lunch will be served in a classroom, and for those little ones in elementary school, recess will be allowed. If parents are not, do not wish to have their children participate in recess, they can opt out of the program. We're going to redo our bell schedules during school so that we reduce class transitions, and we are exploring a number of those options. We're also looking at how to issue locker, so the social distancing is in mind, and that when kids do it, do need to go to their lockers, that they will be able to do it with more than six feet distance in between the lockers. Looking at ways that we can enhance our entrance ways to ensure that we have additional entrance ways to maximize social distancing and physical distancing when we enter and leave school, as well as it is important to note that visitors and volunteers will not be allowed at schools at this point in time, and field trips will like, will not be, will not be allowed under our recommendations as we sit today. Next slide. Moving forward, we have been, along with every other organization, purchasing and obtaining as much personal protective equipment and cleaning materials as we possibly can. We do have a stockpile of personal protective equipment for our staff and for those in need. We also will provide hand wipe, if available, I'm sorry, hand wipes and hand sanitizer in all of our classrooms and common areas. There will also be routine cleaning of touch points, and we will also increase that with our amazing building services staff. Enhanced cleaning will take place as has in our some 4 million, 4 million square feet of our buildings, and we will also do antiviral fogging as it is needed. CCPS staff continues to explore ways that we can increase ambient airflow. As we know, ambient airflow from the outside in does help. However, we must keep in mind a balance of the overall safety of our schools as well. As it relates to the use of water fountains, water fountains will be continued to be in operation. However, we will continue, we will encourage our staff and our students to make, to bring refillable water bottles for those that it applies for so that they can fill them up at our water filling stations. Next slide, please. As we continue, this is cultural change, and again, we're going to ask and beg for your help as a community, and we, we, we look for a commitment of cooperation for this, and this deals with ill students coming to school. If we have a student that is ill, only comes to school or begins to develop, to begin to get ill at school, they will be immediately isolated in an isolation room that will be established in every one of our schools. We're going to request that parents pick their children up within one hour, within 60 minutes of receiving notification that your child is ill. In order to enhance the ability for us to, to, to have the child that is ill be taken home, we're also going to increase the number of emergency contacts inside of your children's file to ensure that we can find someone to pick them, to pick up your student. We understand many of you work outside of the, outside of the Charles County area, and we understand 60 minutes is a short period of time. However, we are looking for as many options as we can, and we need, and, and, and we have to have your cooperation in this. One of the next points that we need to discuss is if we do get notified of a COVID-positive case that has been inside of one of our schools. It is important to understand that there is no law that requires information be shared with any local school system across the country of some, either a student or, or, or someone who enters inside of our schools that is COVID-positive. When we do learn through our partnerships with the health department or through our partnerships with the community, that someone has been inside or we have a student that is, that is tested positive for COVID, that we will independently investigate each one of those cases with our collective partners in the community. We will receive advice from the health department that will be the lead investigator. They'll work with our office, the Office of Safety and Security, as well as the school administrators to ensure that we're doing everything that we can to not only contact trace, but also to disinfect all the places that need to be disinfected with inside of our schools. Next slide, please. As we talked a little bit earlier, this is another cornerstone to making the impossible possible, another culture change and something else that we're going to request your assistance with. As far as transportation goes, one of the leading questions that you hear is how are we going to transport kids on school buses? The Charles County Public Schools has made, has made the decision that we are willing to transport one child per seat on a school bus. This gives us roughly 22 students in each school bus. In addition, any students that live together or cohabitate would also be allowed to ride in the same seats, so we can increase that. Something new that we are proposing is that parents who wish to partake in having transportation would pre-register every quarter with us that they are going to need transportation for their child. We are going to continue to encourage, and we do believe from the survey results that we've seen, roughly 34% of your, of our survey results said that parents were willing to transport or make arrangements through community efforts to have their children transported to and from school. Rest assured, buses will be cleaned and sanitized at least twice per day. We've worked with our amazing bus contractors to ensure that this will occur to the best of our possible abilities, but no less than twice per day. Next slide.
So I need to reiterate something that Mr. Stotter just went over. Parents, you are our partners in this. We're going to ask you every single morning to check your child, think about whether or not he or she is healthy enough to go to school. Because if you send a sick child to school, you're potentially sending a sick child into a place where he or she is going to infect lots of other children, whether it's with COVID or anything else. Also, we are very serious about the idea of you providing us local emergency contacts. So if that your child needs to be picked up from school, we can assure the rest of our school community, including our teachers, that that child won't be on the school grounds for more than an hour. That's important. We need to work together on this. Thank you for that support. We're going to continue as your school system to monitor the guidance from the state, from our local health department, from the State Department of Education, as we make decisions about reopening in the fall. But as I stated earlier on, the state superintendent made the decision to close schools, and it will be the state superintendent who makes the decision to reopen schools. And once she makes that decision, it's my responsibility and the team here working at Charles County Public Schools to make sure we have a plan for opening safely. We want your children back in school. That's where they belong, and that's our job, is to do school, and that's what we want to do. Your teachers, our principals, we want to be with your kids, but we're not going to do it until it's safe for everyone involved. So keep an eye out on our website, keep an eye out on your email. Yes, we're going to continue to email and call you to keep you up to date on the latest information. Mrs. Wilson, I'll turn it over to you now so we can hear from our community.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending the Board of Education and the Charles County Public Schools Town Hall meeting to accept community comment on the reopening of schools. I am Tina Wilson, Vice Chairman of the Board, and I will be conducting this evening's Town Hall. To ensure everyone has an opportunity to speak, there are a few rules. This afternoon, the board is limiting the discussion to parent and community suggestions for reopening schools in the fall. Speakers should listen for their name to be called, and staff will unmute you. Speakers have two minutes to speak. There are 30 speakers, so we ask that you keep your comments brief so that everyone has a chance to participate. I encourage you to listen to what is discussed and ask questions or contribute indifferent opinions if you have one. If the conversation is going too long, staff might ask you to wrap up your comment. Speakers should identify themselves by name only. Board members and the superintendent are here to listen to your comments and suggestions. So let's begin. We will now call our first speaker.
Hi, I don't have any comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Hi, this is Dr. Emery Howard. I see that you're considering students attending school on alternate days. I was wanting to make a suggestion in reference to maybe developing cohorts in reference to how to carry out that plan and to reduce class size.
Any further comments?
No, no further comments, unless you want me to provide example of what I'm speaking of, providing cohorts to reduce the class size or the amount of students that are in classroom, but now I don't.
Thank you.
Hi, I want to start by saying these are our children, and we are all very passionate about them, their safety and their education. I'm a parent of a nine-year-old elementary school child and do not feel comfortable sending my child back to school as I feel this pandemic is extremely serious. I have a hard time putting my child's health in the hands of others when I can't keep her safe myself during these times. She struggles keeping a mask on and keeping her hands off of things when she is in my care, so how can I guarantee she will be able to do this for an entire school day? And who will be responsible for ensuring she does? Are the teachers in school administrators willing to accept the responsibility to make sure each child that walks through the doors of the school keeps their mask on and when they, and wash their hands when they're required? That is a major ask of these teachers, and I'm not sure anyone has inquired if they feel comfortable with that large responsibility. When our children left school, it was the beginning of the fourth quarter. After several weeks, the school decided to start online learning by implementing Microsoft Teams and having the students complete paper packets. The first day of Teams was unsuccessful, in my opinion. Yes, my child was able to log in, but that was it. There was chaos and confusion and nothing got accomplished. As the weeks went on, the meetings got better. However, she was only able to meet with her class twice a week for 30 minutes at a time. The rest of the time, she was left to complete this 150-page paper packet and take pictures of her work to upload. No learning took place during the fourth quarter. Honestly, my child checked out, and due to frustration, so did I. I can imagine that this was the same for many other families. This cannot be the case for the new school year as it will be the first quarter, and learning must take place. How are the schools prepared to handle the bandwidth for all of the students now on the distance learning platform? What will the distance learning platform be? Will there be a trial run for the prior, for prior to the opening to prep for glitches? I'm sure you are all referring to the CDC's School Decision Treat Guidelines as the baseline for reopening Charles County Public Schools. However, please know this is simply a baseline. We all expect the board to go above and beyond to keep our children protected and safe as our education must continue during these unprecedented times, and this will impact them for years to come. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? You can hear me? Okay, sorry. Thank you so much. Okay, so first I want to say thank you to the Charles County Public Schools faculty, teachers, health and safety officials, and the community for having this forum. I think it's extremely essential that you continue to have forums and public comment during this time. Again, my name is Deanna Guy, and I'm a proud parent of a now fifth grader and a seventh grader. My, my main concern honestly is the health and safety, of course, of the masks on the children, but mainly my, my son. He has severe asthma, and my main concern is for those children with immune deficiencies or with upper respiratory issues. Because I, you know, COVID can, of course, you all know that this virus can have severe, you know, issues, and, you know, honestly, for a parent, for any parent, I know that they're concerned about their children, but for me especially, that's my main concern, is for him to attempt to ride on a bus or be in a classroom or be in PE, whatever the case may be, and even with a mask, you can't restrict. If, if a child gets sick, yes, you can, you know, put them off to the side, but at the same time, there's a guarantee that those children won't be impacted or affected by this, this disease and because, or not disease, but this, this virus. And that's just honestly, just my, my biggest concern is having him to breathe on a day-to-day basis. And again, I don't mind, you know, remote learning, but at the same time, I have to consider my employment and everything else, but if by chance, if, you know, online options are available, I definitely do want to assist with Teams because Teams was, like the other caller said, very, oh, I'm sorry. So yeah, I, I just want to, you know, continue to have these forums and continue to reach out to, you know, our parents because we have a lot to, to, to say.
That's good. Yes, hello. Good evening, good evening. So I'm, I'm James Ryan Thompson. I'm an elementary educator and a parent of a first and second grader in Charles County Public Schools. I'm grateful tonight to be able to speak with the parent head-on on behalf of my wife, and I'm presuming really many other families with a similar, similar home structure here. I support complete distance learning for all our students until vaccines are available. We've got a five and seven-year-old here, and I can't take off work to take care of them. My wife's considered essential. Arranging schedules is already going to be incredibly challenging, and then we're going to throw in inconsistencies of two days here, a week here. Even in an ideal work situation, as I have with Charles County Public Schools, that's going to be hard to arrange. So, and additionally, I just want to thank you for continuing to support all of our families with meals and other resources. Now, we hear CCPS say that we strive to be the difference. I believe that right now, the greatest way to do that is to set a national example on how to implement quality online learning for the safety of our communities. I'm in an online teacher certification course now, and I look forward to the opportunity to be able to put that to use in fall and keep my family and all of our families as safe as possible. Some quick bullet points on why we should continue distance learning in the fall. We can't expect our youngest children to be able to understand why they should or how to follow health guidelines that were sprung on them overnight several months ago. My five-year-old's two-second hand washing and frustration with his mask after two minutes on his face does not bode well for reducing exposure, and we'll have 25 of these kids in our classrooms. I don't want my children getting sick. I also don't want them exposing anyone else to this virus, if God forbid they get it, or anything else. And do we really want to risk with all of the uncontrollable variables exposing all of our families, our parents, our grandparents, aunts, uncles, and extended families who support our children daily, many in legal guardianship roles? Quick list of some more. I'm just going to go down them. This is as observed by my own children here in a controlled environment with just two of them. Saliva on shirt, forgetting to cover their mouth when they cough, forgetting to social distance when they're happy to see a friend. Who did my kids play with yesterday? Who did those children play with last night? Are the people at my wife's work infected? Spitting while talking, mask getting disgustingly dirty, bathroom habits, because I assume we're not doing any bathroom monitoring, and we, we do know that kids come to school sick. They do on a daily basis. I really don't think that's going to change.
Thank you, sir. I'm, I'm sorry, your time is out, up. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully you all can hear me. Okay, I'm, I'm Joy Legon. I'm the student of a rising eighth grade young lady, and she's also a special needs student. So I want to thank the board and the faculty and the health officials just for doing the due diligence to have this forum. We appreciate it. I think transparency is extremely important. I do want to express a few concerns, some, some similar to what other parents have mentioned here. Social distancing and mask wearing are, you know, CDC guidelines that I think don't necessarily work, work well for adults, as we've seen in the state of Maryland. So my big concern is how will the county enforce this with the schools and, with the kids in the schools and ensure that 100% of the time, you know, with student-to-teacher ratios, that these students are actually wearing masks and socially distanced on buses and in the classrooms? Are there going to be additional staff members available to help enforce the guideline? The other question I had is in terms of students with special needs. I heard on the presentation that it was mentioned that they would have additional time in the classroom, but if they are, you know, if a parent isn't comfortable sending their kids back to school and they, they opt to do distance learning, what will be available for students with special needs with 504s or IEPs? I appreciate all of the work that, you know, the county and the board is doing. I just think that we need to take a really serious look at this before, you know, putting people at risk and making sure that our kids are safe because one instance, just one instance of a kid coming into school, a symptomatic or asymptomatic child coming to school could potentially be an issue, you know, throughout the county. That's all I have to say and I hope that those issues are going to be addressed in the coming months.
Thank you.
Yes, I am here. This is Governor Suvie, can you hear me? Yes, thank you again for this forum, like everyone has been saying. I really appreciate it, we appreciate it. And as a parent, as a parent of a ninth grader, we do have some concerns. I know you stated that there's a plan to do online and in-person and we can choose one per quarter. My question is, let's say we choose to have our child, our child go to school in person and you mentioned that if there is a COVID- nineteen positive person, staff or student in the school that, of course, you're not going to give private information out of who that person is, but I think it's very important that the parents know immediately if someone in their classroom was tested positive and there should be a contingency plan as far as if that child, if that parent would allow that child to go back to school within those next two weeks or those next three weeks. So then that would mean another option of online would be, should be available to that parent to choose just to make sure their child is safe. So that's one piece. Another piece is if with this in-person option, with the teachers having to move the chairs six feet apart, are you planning on hiring more teachers? Because I'm thinking you're going to definitely need staff to be able to fulfill that request there. And then also with the children eating in the classroom, knowing that they're going to have to off their mask to eat, is that also a potential for this virus spreading during lunch period? All of those things, we would like if you can address and consider some contingency plans for. And even the online option, last comment, even though the online option is difficult, just having a child look at a computer all day long. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have no comment. Can you hear me? Hi, so first of all, like everybody else, I'd like to thank you for having this forum. I appreciate the difficulty of the topic. I'm Director of Mental Health Services over at the Detention Center. I've been working throughout this pandemic, so I understand a lot of the nuances that go into planning. I do have two students, I have an incoming junior and an incoming freshman at McDonough High School. And I had a lot of concerns over the format, the Apex format that was used. In our case, both of our students are in the enrichment classes, AP courses, and Apex Learning did not, in my opinion, meet the requirements that they needed. Many of their classes were not held because they weren't on that format and the one, the classes that were seemed to be far below the academic level that I would expect. I also have concerns. I think there's certain things that can't be done virtually. My daughter, for example, was accepted into the dance program and is super excited to begin that. She is a dancer, her studio has tried to do online learning as much as they can and that's just something that's not quite the same as being in person. I would imagine H vac students or other types of specialty programs might require in-site learning as compared to the online learning. So I would just hope that maybe as the details get worked out, that we can look at the individual schools and what their needs are, but also each student. I know we mentioned certain categories, but especially the AP students. My junior will be taking four AP classes and at least based on our experience thus far, it's very hard to imagine how in a split format, he's going to get the material that's needed and get the preparation that he needs at his level to move on. So I'm just hoping that those are some of the things that get looked at as we navigate this forum. So thank you.
Hi, yes, can you hear me? Yes, hi, my name is Stephanie Gray. I am a parent of a going into fourth grade as well as two children going into elementary. Like the fellow speakers, I also have a large concern about my children following CDC guidelines. I don't think it's very possible. But on the other end of the spectrum, I do have the high concern of the distance learning. Me, as an essential employer, I definitely did not have the time and dedication to give to my children at home that I felt they needed. And I definitely felt like my third grader definitely didn't meet what was needed in order to move on to the next grade level, even though she did. And it does concern me with two new children going into elementary that if it is complete distance learning, that they might get off to a slow start. So it is very difficult being in this situation. I do thank you guys for all that you have done because you have provided a lot of resources to my family. But it has definitely been a struggle just being in a home as an essential parent and trying to take on that role as a teacher. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, can you hear me? Okay, like the other callers, I just want to say thank you for all the support from the school. I have a first grader going into the second grade this year and I am full-time telecommuting in an IT job and between my Zoom calls and meetings and educating, trying to help educate my daughter. It was difficult, like it was for most parents. But I don't think that I'm ready to send my daughter back to school because just upon the other comments that I heard in what we know the star, so much that we don't know, the unknown, I'm not really ready to take that risk. But I will say I am concerned about my daughter's and the other students' engagement level during social distancing learning. In the beginning, it was exciting, exciting because it was new, it was different, but halfway through, myself as well as her, extremely disengaged as we tried to go through the packets, we tried to figure out MS Teams, we tried to give the other students a chance to talk and just navigating through which whose turn it was and raising your hand, all those interactions that you get face-to-face that was hard to do through social distancing. So it made me further concerned about the mental health of my daughter and the other students as it relates to being separated the way that we are. So I guess I would just try to encourage the school system to think about the mental health support that our students are going to need from their guidance counselors and others, in some way checking in with them, engaging them. And other levels too, as it relates to activity. I know that after school was over, distance learning, I can take her outside and play, but what I noticed was that PE, the things that we, physical education that we are not talking, that we haven't spoke a lot about, she missed that as well. I mean, just kind of laying on the, just being totally disengaged from what they knew their day-to-day was. And that mental transition for her was very difficult, as it was for a lot of adults. So I would just like to know that the school is doing what it can to support the students, their mental health as well as their education as well. Because without that, they cannot, they can't learn, even in this. So the opportunity to speak.
Good afternoon, thank you all for this town hall. I'm a parent of a son who's in the Adult Independence Program and my primary comment is the lack of engagement for the AIP students. I appreciate, you know, the effort, however, I feel that there could have been a lot more done and I hope if we're going into the virtual setting again next year, that there will be a little bit more face-to-face engagement. Considering kids, you know, that are special needs, oftentimes this is the only opportunity for them to engage with others outside of their home and I just felt that there wasn't a lot of engagement with his peers as well as his teachers. And again, I know this is, you know, challenging for everyone, but I just wish that the individuals with special needs, there could be special consideration, especially from a virtual setting where there is more face-to-face engagement. The, the learning materials that were provided, again, I'm going to say the same thing as other parents. These kids, you know, it's, it's not the same. It was very challenging just to try to get the child engaged in doing them, but also sending those mountains of papers back was very challenging, especially if you don't have, you know, a high-end scanner or you have to use your phone to take multiple pictures and then upload. So again, if there's any way that you all can, again, take a special look at the special needs population within the school system and see how we can be better served to ensure that our children don't regress. Because again, this is oftentimes the only opportunity that they have to interact with others outside of the school system. But again, thank you all. But also too, mental health also, I think is very important for all of our kids. And if there could be some component of mental health, some check-ins, some town halls or something. Because these kids do need to be able to openly express how they're feeling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hear me? Great, so I'm Tanya Kuzhren again. Like everyone else, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on such an important topic. I am a parent and I'm also a registered nurse, so I have a little bit of a different perspective than some of the folks. But I agree very much with the gentleman that spoke earlier, who was a teacher, who said that it would be difficult to ensure that children are doing what they need to do to be safe in the school. So I am totally against the kids going back to school at this time because there are too many variables that I think would increase opportunities to pass this disease on. And just having firsthand knowledge of how sick folks can get and how it impacts one's health, I just think that we have to be very thoughtful before returning to school and, unless we can ensure that we can work within the CDC guidelines. And so I also think that there should be a registered nurse in every school in the event that something happens, not a shared nurse, but a nurse in each and every school. I think that class sizes would have to be less than ten and that social distancing would have to be ensured and I, again, don't think that that can be done with children. I think that children have to be able to go to the bathroom as much as they need to and that somebody needs to accompany them to ensure that they're properly washing their hands so that they don't pass any diseases along and that would require additional staff and I'm not sure that that's going to be able to be done. I don't think that kids would be able to work on desks because we don't know how long the virus lasts on surfaces. So they would need to have their own laptop or electronic device to work on. Same with, you know, providing, if there were any food cooked. And I think you said maybe lunches would be served in the school and it's sack lunches or something to that effect. But I think there has to be a lot of work done before we can really think about letting the kids go back to school. So I think it would be wise to really focus on how to effectively teach the children at home and to keep them engaged. Maybe, I think someone also mentioned something about cohort, cohorts. And I think that that might be good if there could be, you know, small cohorts that the kids could engage with each other and a teacher that they could interact with. But again, just don't think it's safe to return to school at this time. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, so I have a question. I have two students that are entering both the fifth grade, going to the same school. And I guess my question would be if we did the two days out of, out of the week of schooling, will siblings be allowed to go on the same days or will they have to go on different days? I'm not comfortable. I'm not comfortable with my kids going back to school, however, I'm an essential employee and it was very hard for me to do my job and to teach two children at the same time with distance learning. So if we are with the option of sending our kids back to school, will they be allowed to go back to school? Because I'm not comfortable with them going on different days as they walk together to and from the bus stop as well as one would be home alone while the other's at school on alternate days? So that's the question that I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll turn it back over to you for final comment. Madam Chair.
Mrs. Mc, Mrs. Wilson, I can step in if you like.
Okay.
I think Mrs. McGraw is technically.
She's muted.
Ms. McGraw?
Yeah.
No, her screen, yeah, her screen went out as soon as you called her name.
She's got some technical difficulties. So on behalf of all of our Board of Education members who have been listening intently to your comments, thank you all so much for, for listening in, for paying attention to the presentation that we've made and for providing us with some really good comments and questions. Mrs. McGraw is back, so I'm going to turn it over to you if you'd like to do some concluding comments. But parents, please stay engaged with us. We appreciate your comments, your questions. They help us think through the decisions we have to make for the future. Ms. McGraw?
Thank you, I'm sorry I was gone, I didn't hear what you said at the very beginning. But I do want to say that there were lots of great questions and lots of great comments, a lot for us to think about and consider. So I'd just like to say thank you very much to everyone that joined us this evening. We truly do value your input in helping us make decisions for our students. And we just, we hope that we can continue to make informed decisions that are safe and healthy and instructionally sound for each and every one of the students that are, you know, in our care. So thank you all very much for joining us. That concludes our town hall for this evening. Have a good, have a pleasant evening. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.